I'll call the study session for May 12th for Newport Beach City Council to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that council members Rozansky and Webb are absent, excused, and councilmember, Mayor Protim Curry is here, he is just not in the chambers.
Okay. Okay, first, there he comes. First item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilman Deagle?
Yes, I have several questions on number four, establishment of a special events advisory committee. I think that's a good idea, one that I welcome, that we try to establish some standards for, you know, how we look at these events. And so it looks like we're establishing an ad hoc committee to interview the people that will be the ultimate event committee. My question is, one of the issues that the council seemed to be struggling with was the review of the budgets, and if that's going to be part of establishing standards. I mean, we get budgets of over $100,000, and I think we, at least I was looking for some guidance in terms of, you know, is this a reasonable budget for what they're trying to achieve?
In terms of what they're requesting from the city?
Yes.
Councilman Hinn, maybe you have a better understanding of?
If I'm understanding your question, I don't think it was contemplated that there would be a review of the budget so much as a review of the project to see in what fashion the project provided a return to justify that expenditure. So, it's a little different, I think, than where you were headed with, you know, whether or not the $100,000 would be a correct number. It would be more so, does the project itself justify that sort of a contribution? And if so, how? It could be in a numerical return on investment scenario, it could be in a social benefit scenario, or a community benefit scenario that isn't necessarily a hard dollar number. But that this committee would provide some advice about that, not a decision, but advice to the council about how to view that issue.
Okay. And then the criteria that the committee proposes to establish, that would come back to council for ultimate review and approval?
I would expect so. Again, the committee itself would be purely advisory, so, yeah, council would, decision-making authority would always still best in the council.
Okay. Thank you. And then on number five, the resolution in support of keeping the Equestrian Center. I had a couple of questions on that. The first is, we're going to be commenting on the EIR?
That is my understanding.
Okay. And then I was looking at one of the whereas's, and it talks about, I kind of want to understand a little bit more why that would be in the resolution, where the costs, the revenue associated with the facility is $65,000 per year. And my concern is that would somehow work against us, because the whole reason that the Fair Board wants to have another use of the property is because they believe that there's a better revenue generator out there than $65,000 per year for the seven and a half acres.
Councilwoman Deagle, I think as far as the whereas's, we pretty much copied what the City of Costa Mesa did, so we didn't kind of invent these or tailor them.
Okay, yeah, I guess I'm just trying to understand the thinking behind, why we'd want to put that in. It would, my concern would be a sort of play into their hand, or the whole reason why they want to eliminate that use.
Well, I think that what it says is, costs associated with the land acquisition and replacement of the facilities would greatly exceed, it would be very expensive in order to relocate it. I think that's the point they're trying to make here.
Okay. Even though the Fair Board's probably not going to pay any relocation like it would in a mobile home, or something like that?
No, they wouldn't have to pay relocation assistance, but I think there would be a lot of pressure on them to find a spot and a place, and probably contribute money towards doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Deagle?
Nothing.
Uh, Councilman Hinn?
Nothing.
Councilor Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protim Curry?
Steve, on item seven, the subgrain improvements, including those on Spiglas Hill Road, is this going to address the issue of the sort of perpetual sea patrol at Spiglas Hill at the entrance to Harbor Hill?
That is correct.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Deagle, you had one more?
Yes, on item number 14, which is the report and the stimulus, you asked for direction. Are you seeking direction, or?
No, only if there were comments from the city council. I mean, I think this money is going to be forthcoming, we are positioned ourselves to where we know what to do. So, only if there was some additional direction, or look at something else.
Okay. My only thoughts on it are, the, a lot of the monies that we've received so far, it's from formula-driven block grants, but there's a lot of funds out there that if we take the initiative and fill out an application, we might have access to. So I would be interested in us maybe looking at those, I don't know if the economic development people could, or another alternative is, we could amend the lobbyist agreement, and, you know, for somebody more, a thousand per month, they could go and try to find us a few more million.
Staff has certainly looked at applications, and we are aware of some of them, and we are applying for them, but that doesn't mean that they made this staff report, because we thought the report was just, what do we have coming? Not what is a possibility. But I do need to add the caveat that, you know, these applications can be very labor-intensive at a time where it's just a question of, where's the best return for the effort? So I think we really need to pick our spots on them. If you're anything like us, and you probably are, we're getting, you know, emails and have for the last six weeks, for companies, you know, that specialize in trying to, you know, shake the tree and have stimulus money fall out of it. It's an industry that has been created overnight.
I think they're former mortgage brokers.
It's nice to see they're creating jobs.
Okay, thank you. I have no items. So we'll move on to our next item, which is the H1N1 influenza update.
And Chief Lois is coming up here, and I put this on the agenda about two weeks ago, because it seemed like the swine flu issue was getting a great deal of publicity, and didn't know how big it would get, and it seems like it has since died down by putting it on the agenda. So Steve, maybe we should take some credit?
It pretty much was. I'll tell you, it was a good drill, though, for all of us in the county. And as talking with county officials all last week, they said they were looking for something that would take everybody's mind off it, and I think the Santa, in fact, they were very serious when they said the Santa Barbara Fire provided that, because all of the media attention that was given the H1N1 was kind of heightened in the excitement about it. And so actually, when the fire went, it really became what it was. And the nice thing about it was, though, that we actually, every morning at 10 o'clock, was meeting, we're meeting with all the health officials on conference calls, all the first responders, and it really was kind of the first time we've ever done that. So it was nice to really talk about how to, you know, quiet everybody's fears down, because that's one where it can get, the hysteria gets a little built up over it. On the one side, it would be good, we met every morning at 10:00. If it was going to be bad, we could surely facilitate things, but it was really to how to get the message out that this is something that we, you know, will face every year in one type or another. So it was a good drill for the county. As it turned out, we hadn't heard much more, and it is what it is. But we'll be able to respond in the county, if anything came up, with all the agencies, and we're working all well together. So that's about all I have to report.
Any questions of the chief? Okay, anybody from the public want to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to the third item on our agenda, the budget review. It's the overview of the budget and the capital improvements program.
Mr. Mayor, as we've done in the past few years, wanted to lead off this study session and accomplish two things. One is the macro overview of the budget, and have Dennis Danner provide that presentation, so that we can spend as much time talking about, you know, the large picture and the gross numbers as far as general fund and total budget. And then the second part of this study session is to look at the CIP recommended budget to you, and make sure that we have enough time to discuss that. If not, we'll carry over that discussion to the next study session. And at the end of this first presentation, then, is going to be a list of other issues that I want to bring before you, starting at the next study session, for some drill down in terms of some in-depth discussion and look. And we would start off with the facility financing plan being the first thing that we would look at, but there is a list that will be coming to you after that. Also, it's my intention, prior to the next study session, to have all of the PowerPoint presentations that would be provided you. We're not looking at making those presentations, because I think most of the next study session would certainly be devoted to those issues we want to be talking about. But in order to provide you, you know, an advanced look at if the department heads got up, what they would be saying, and that way, if you have any questions that, again, you want to focus on and want some more information on, then we can focus our attention on that. So that's the way that we would like to see it go, at least for the next couple of study sessions, and I'll turn it over to Dennis at this time.
Thank you, City Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. What we'd like to do today is to go through a brief overview, a macro view of the budget, as City Manager indicated. On the agenda today is a review of the budget process and assumptions we used in preparing it. We're going to look at revenues and expenditures, we'll look at our reserves and fund balances, we'll discuss pending issues, which Homer just referred to, and then we'll conclude our presentation. I'd like to say at the rate of the beginning, that these first several slides, you've seen every year in the past, we'll go through them real quickly. I left them on here, because this is also on our website, so this is primarily for the public. And also, I just counted, and this is the 19th Newport Beach budget that I presented to the city council. So our fiscal year begins on July 1st. The budget delegates authority for preparation to the city manager, requires budget submission to the council at least 35 days prior to the fiscal year. You receive this budget on May 1st. Requires public notice, which is scheduled for your next meeting, May 26th, and your public hearing on the proposed budget is scheduled for June 9th. The charter provisions for the budget is, the council may modify the budget before adoption, of course. The council is to adopt the budget before June 30th. Council may amend the budget after adoption, which you normally do at each council meeting. Council may reduce appropriations if necessary, and all appropriations last at the end of the fiscal year, if not expended or encumbered. We begin our budget process in November, where we begin our projections, revise our projections for the current fiscal year, and that became more important, as Councilmember Rozansky indicated, this year more important than normal. In December, we prepared our preliminary revenue estimates and fund balances, and to ensure that our reserves were fully funded. In January, we established our budget ceilings and met with the departments to give them the information. In February and March, the departments submitted their budget to the city manager, and we went over with each department, we reviewed their submittal with each department. In April, we sent the budget to the print shop. As I mentioned, it was delivered to you in May, and this is where you begin your review at this study session. I mentioned in June, the public hearing will be on June 9th, and the budget will be adopted on June 23rd. The purpose of the city's budget is to serve as a planning guide, and that's what this document is. It matches available resources with council priorities, ensures that essential city services will be provided. It allows for the public input, maintains adequate reserves for emergency resources, and establishes the legal authority for us to make our expenditures. I won't spend much time here. These are the city's fund structures. You can see down the left-hand column, the general fund, special revenue funds, cap project funds, internal service funds, permanent funds, which is really endowment funds that are meant to be permanent, and enterprise funds, which are our utilities. But we're going to spend most of our time today talking about the general fund, which is the chief operating fund of the city's budget, used to account for all financial resources, except those required to be accounted for in another fund. And this is where the general fund, as you know, is where we pay our public safety employees, excuse me, our recreation employees, library, planning, building, et cetera. It's all expended out of the city's general fund. So let's get into revenue budgeting. The way we budget revenues is, of course, we use known factors. We rely heavily on historical analysis, so we can project trends. We look at state and county issues, we look at the economy, especially this year, economic development, growth expectations, and most importantly, we rely upon department input, because they're really the experts in, especially in charges for services, and planning and building, and recreation, et cetera. They're the experts in what they anticipate their activity will be, and what their revenue estimates are for the new year. So, 2009-10, revenue all funds. This is a little bit hard to read, but as you can see, we're estimating $210.6 million revenue all funds. And the categories that make that up, of course, are property taxes, sales tax, other revenue, use of money in property, fines, forfeitures, charges for services, intergovernmental revenues, which we receive from another governmental agency, license fees and permits, enterprise fund revenues, and internal service fund revenues. And those are depicted in this pie chart, and they're in the order that you see listed. So this is property taxes, the next one would be sales taxes, this little slice here is other revenue, et cetera. And please stop me if you have any questions, because I know I'm going pretty quickly. Our total general fund revenues for this year is $150.1 million. You'll see it on a later slide, that's virtually the same as in the current fiscal year. Of that $150 million, $78.8 million, or 52% is made up of property taxes. That's very important, of course, to this city. $40 million, which is our next largest revenue category, is 27%, license and permits, intergovernmental, et cetera. And the same thing, this is property taxes, these are taxes other than property, license and permits, et cetera. So it's in the same order, this pie chart is in the same order as this listing here. I might just point out that charges for current services, $14.4 million. We instructed the departments, if there was a fee increase scheduled for this current year, that those numbers should be factored into that amount, in case that question comes up. Of course, our three top general fund revenue sources, secured property taxes, were estimated at $56.9 million. Makes up 37.9, almost 38% of the total taxes, property taxes for the city. Sales tax, $19.6 million, which is, as you know, way down from what we projected in prior years, and transient occupancy tax. So we've got 38%, 13.1, and 8.6%. We are projecting on the secured property tax, a 2% increase. We're projecting a 2.5% increase for sales tax, although that's 2.5% over the 13% down that we're in the current year, and basically no change to transient occupancy tax.
Dennis, that percentage increase in the sales tax still seems a little bit anomalous to me. I guess you're expecting that we've bottomed out on the retail environment, right, at this juncture, and that, you know, when we do our year-over-year comparisons for most of the rest of the year, it's going to be an increase?
I think we have bottomed out. Of course, my crystal ball's no better than anybody else's, but I think we have bottomed out. Everything that I hear is that we should be at the end of this down cycle by the end of this calendar year. We do anticipate Nordstrom's coming online early next, not early, in April of next year, and hopefully the sales, our sales tax from car sales will recover as well. But it is a 2.5% increase. It's the one number up there that I'm probably most concerned with.
I guess remembering that our fiscal year is July, is July 1 to June 30, might help to understand that a little better.
So Dennis, to put that in perspective, it's basically a 10% reduction in what we were anticipating going into this current budget year. Is that right?
Pretty much, 10 or 11%. Yes.
And then the TOT, that is, we're making no assumptions about Pelican Hills. We had been making assumptions in the past, but we're not doing that now.
We, I'm sorry. No, I think we are. Pelican Hill came, came up in, came open in late November, so, now we have a little history with it, so we're not going overboard, as if the recession wasn't with us. So we're being very conservative as far as factoring that in, which is why we're saying that, you know, it's basically going to stabilize. I think Pelican Hill is what's going to stabilize. If it wasn't for Pelican Hill, we would be reducing our?
We do have some figures from them? You said we have figures from them, from, for the period that they've been open, or?
We have very preliminary figures, yes. We put this slide in here just for your informational purposes. It's right out of our CAFR for last year. We thought you might like to see the principal property taxpayers in the city. Of course, the biggest one is the Irvine Company. I'm not even sure where all of these are located, but the total assessed valuation of these top 10, I think it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, is $2.5 billion. Those top 10 make up 7% of the city's total assessed valuation.
That's the city share, right? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's total assessed valuation.
I see, this value of the property, I got it.
Correct, correct.
Never mind, thank you.
And Dennis, as I recall, our assessed valuation is around $31 billion?
Oh, I just looked at that number, Homer. I think it's more like 37 or 38 trillion, or billion, I'm sorry, billion.
Sounds like you're testifying before Congress.
Are you leaving us for the Obama administration?
See if you pass the stress test.
Yeah, these numbers keep getting bigger, don't they?
A trillion here and a trillion there, pretty soon you got big money.
Now we'll look at expenditure budgeting real quickly. Of course, the most important thing when, the instructions from the city management, when we start putting the budget together, is council priorities. He tells us we're going to review those, we reviewed them at the last council meeting, I think we're going to review them again at the next council meeting, but that's certainly utmost in the mind when we put the budget together. utmost in the mind when we put the budget together. On personnel, we budget for all authorized positions. They're allocated to divisions and funds based upon department recommendations. We look at required costs, and those are primarily approved contracts, utilities, equipment, things that we can't really do without. If we're having, if we're estimating a fuel increase or something, those are all factored into our required costs. Then we have controllable costs for such things as new and replacement of equipment, and it's based upon department justification and historical trends. Items included in the budget are council reserve fund policies, and I might add that at this point that the council policies are all fully funded, per your council policy F2. It's F2. Approved positions, recommended position changes are all factored into the budget, as likewise merit step increases, ceiling adjustments that requests will be received from the departments, all known MOU increases, and I have a list of those. CEA, prof tech, league, key in management, and part-time employees will receive a 4% COLA in July. Fire and fire management will receive a 3.5% COLA in January of 2010. There's no, there's no money included in the budget for PEA and PMA, because those contracts have not been negotiated. They expire in December 2009. And of course, all city manager-approved supplemental budget items, which we'll discuss in a minute. We'll discuss right now. This is a little hard to see from the audience. I think you have a copy in front of you, but we received a little over $1 million in supplemental budget requests. Of that amount, $829,000 was approved. Of the 829 that was approved, $255,000 was revenue offset. So by approving certain of these requests, we were able to increase our revenue estimates at the same time. And so the net increase is $574,000.
And Dennis, let me add here, the request, a little over $1 million is, I think, about 50% of what we normally have as far as supplemental budget requests. So the word went out that you need to be very tight with your supplemental budget request, and that that's what we were going to spend most of our time reviewing. So you see a number of departments that didn't even come in with supplemental budget requests. Recreation, almost all of the recreation department's budget request is offset by additional revenues, and you'll see the implications of that in some part-time positions, too. There was a, really, the only full-time position that was requested in this whole budget was with the police department, and that was not funded. But there were some very, you know, worthwhile requests that were made, which is a pretty high number, $574,000, after the offset of the, of the revenue that's coming in. So what does this mean as far as the city council is concerned? You know, in the past, we have always set aside a certain amount of money for the city council to deal with, because you get special requests and you have things that you want to do. So, you know, the budget that is presented to you today still allows $1 million for you to determine how you want to use as you see fit.
A trillion?
You can start there, but we'll let it down to a million. So that was the number that I wanted to hit, as far as making sure that council had some discretionary funding that it could take a look at, and that will probably come into play when we talk about, you know, at the next study session, some of the issues that are going to be coming up, and what requests made to you, you know, from, from city organizations and nonprofits and things like that. So I thought, since this was my last go-round, Dennis' last go-round, we would just put it all out there. You have $1 million, you know, to deal with. So you are good, good stewards of the public's money, and I'm sure you'll deal with that.
You still shouldn't have told us that.
When we look at the expenditure budget for all funds, the total's $225 million. I got that right this time. It's made up of general government, public safety, community development, et cetera. And those percentages, you can, are listed next to them, 7% public safety is 35%. And again, it goes around the, this is general government. This large piece of the pie is public safety, community development, public works, et cetera. So you can see the proportion of each one of these functions to the total city budget. But it's all, it's all funds. Next, we look at, by category, of that, $225 million, 22, 25.8 million. Salaries and benefits makes up $125.7 million, or 56%. Maintenance and operation makes up a little, almost $61 million, or 27%. Capital outlay, 2%, debt service, 2%, and our CIP, I can't read it, I think it's 14%. Likewise, following the same convention, it goes around the pie that way. CIP percentage over the last five years, you can see what the total city's budget was and what the CIP budget was. So beginning in the year 2004 or '05, this is just some historical information. It was 22%, the next year 16%, 20%, 12%, 32% looks a little high, but that's because of all the carryovers are still in this, this number. We didn't know the carryover when we put the budget together, so it was remained in 2008. A lot of those will be carried over to the new year. But new year, 2009-10 is 14%. Six-year average of 20%.
So Dennis, last year, a lot of people tried to make head of the fact that there was such a big increase in the total city budget, but this clearly is reflected in these numbers. That was totally a function of the fact that we were active on the capital improvement front.
That's, that's very correct.
Right. And by the same token, the fact that this shows this falling down doesn't mean we're cutting $60 million. It simply means that we've spent the money, and it doesn't need to be spent again, or else it will roll forward, as you say. But generally, in terms of the budget, though, it means that, you know, capital improvement money, once you spend it, does not build itself into the budget as an ongoing cost.
That's correct. They're one-time costs, and, and again, a lot of this $91 million will be rolling over to the new year. We didn't know the number when we put the budget together, so we left it in 2008, '09, so you can see the magnitude.
And that's an important number for people, that's an important fact for people to focus on when they talk about the budget number, whether it's up or down. Thank you.
For example, I think that's a really good point with Oasis. You know, Oasis is going to be under construction all of this fiscal year, and yet the money was really allocated on this current year.
That's correct.
So that's a very active project. It's going to result in a new Oasis center, but it really doesn't show on the CIP for this upcoming year. So it depends upon when the money has been appropriated.
Yeah, when you, when you look at the numbers, if you really factor in what's carried over and take that out of the '08, '09, and add it to the '09, '10, those two numbers are going to look about the same, at around $60 million, I think, or something close to that, anyway. They're going to be much more evenly matched than what these numbers show.
Correct. And you'll recall from a previous slide, too, one of the very first slides I put up, says all appropriations expire or lapse at June 30, unless it's, they're contracted for or encumbered. So that's what that is, that's exactly what that is. Let's talk about the general fund real quickly here. As you recall from a prior slide, revenue, general fund revenues are projected to be $150 million. Operating expenditures, we're just talking operating, not capital improvements, are budgeted at $148.1 million, which is 75% of the total city budget. Again, a little hard to read, but you'll find general fund revenues and general fund expenditures, going back to fiscal years 2007, 2008, we had 157 versus 138, 150.1, which is very similar in the revenues. I mentioned that there's really, it's virtually the same for the current year as the proposed year. Last year's operating expenditures were budgeted at $147.2 million. This year it's 148, only a 0.5% increase. But remember, this does include all the known MOU increases, so those are factored in here. The reason it didn't increase as much as you might think is, we'll see on a later slide, that when we went into this budget process, the city manager instructed each department to reduce their budget by 2%.
Councilwoman Diggle, getting back to your question earlier about the stimulus package, this doesn't include anything that we think we're going to get, you know, from the federal government as far as a CDBG or anything like that, because we don't have the money in hand, even though we think it's, it's coming. We didn't plug it in.
Taking a better look at the total general fund expenditures, broken down by category, salaries and benefits of $110 million, which makes up 73% of this large piece of the pie. Maintenance operations, $36 million, capital outlay, $1 million, and CIP of $3 million. So it's 73%, 24%, 1%, 2% of the total general fund budget. Each year, we include recurring council grants that we know that we've either received a request for, or that this council's approved in the past and instructed us to go, just go ahead and include it in the budget. So I wanted you to see that these, all of these items are currently included in this budget, including Bogota Island Historical Society, the Bellboa Island Improvement Association, the CDM Chamber, Leadership Tomorrow, the Film Festival, Ensenada Race, Race for the Cure, and the OC Marathon. Those total 228 million, thousand, excuse me, and they are included in the budget that you've received.
While we're on these, it just triggers something that I was wondering if we could do, which is with the Ensenada Race and the Marathon, which both have just occurred. And we had talked earlier about getting some kind of report that the Visitors Bureau was going to be doing general things. And I wonder if we could ask them to give us a snapshot of what they see as results from those two events, if there were, in terms of, and I don't want them to spend money, but they can make a few phone calls and see if there were an increase in hotel usage or restaurant or anything, just because they're so current.
And I want to make sure that I get those events. You're talking about Film Festival?
No, no, I was talking about the Marathon and the Ensenada Race.
What about the Restaurant Association program?
Actually, we just received their request today. It is not in this budget. It'll, it'll be discussed, of course, and placed on the checklist.
So that's not a recurring thing, I guess?
Well, the bids, none of the bids are in here?
The bids are.
Oh, okay.
But not the restaurant.
Well, it is a recurring thing, but these are the ones that you have historically are, last, last year at this time, we put this slide in front of you, and you were good, basically factoring these into the budget. There are other requests that will come to you, including the Restaurant Association, because that changes from time to time, and you always make that decision then at the council meeting where you adopt the budget. You do that prior to the adoption. So we will provide you all of the requests that we've gotten by certainly the first meeting in June.
So is that restaurant, we come out of our $1 million?
Yes.
Depends on the other country, yeah.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Just checking.
I mentioned that we went into this budget process knowing that we're going to face some challenges, and the city manager instructed each department to reduce their budget by 2%. Here's how the departments were able to do that. They reduced salaries and benefits, $1.5 million, maintenance operations, $1.2 million, capital outlay, $256,000, for a total a little bit over $3 million. And those were reductions that were made by each department. On the next slide, there's a breakdown of the departments, admin services, buildings, city attorney, et cetera, and where those reductions were made. So again, in my department, for instance, we reduced $90,000 in salaries and benefits, $85,000 in M&amp;O to reach, I think we actually exceeded our 2% target, but it's $175. Building was able to reduce $100,000 in M&amp;O, and those bottom numbers, total numbers of what you saw on the prior slide, a little over $3 million.
What, what did we reduce for the city council, pray tell?
I think we reduced...
Susan, help me out here. I think it was council member salaries.
Wouldn't have been that much.
It's money that you have available if you need to hire a lobbyist or something.
That's what I recall. It was based upon historical use, and it looked like we weren't going to use that this year, and probably didn't last year either, so we could cut.
And I'd like to focus on this chart, because we've, we've identified $3 million of savings, and is this on top of the $3 million that we identified mid-year when we did the freeze and the sort of, I think, 1% reduction? Is that, was that more or less the number that was, and the capital improvement deferrals?
It's a continuation of that number. In other words, some of the departments, I can speak to my own department, some of the savings that we were able to achieve in this year, we carried forward into the new year. So it's a continuation of that savings.
Well, are those, are those numbers additive or cumulative, or?
No, these are new.
New.
New savings.
So it was about...
1% last year, basically.
Right.
And now 2% for this whole year.
Right, plus some deferrals of CIP. So I think it was about $3 million last year, and about $3 million this year. And, and I know here that we're doing this without the reduction in any services that the public is going to see. I mean, there were some arguably, some capital improvement projects that were deferred, but for the most part, we're doing these in a way that's going to be not impactful on the public.
That's true, but I need to have the caveat that if we carried out some of these reductions long-term, that it, it might have some impacts. But we think that we can get by, you know, at least temporarily, and I say temporarily, at least this, this year. We're also looking at things around City Hall. I mean, the new City Hall and Park Project certainly has more than legs now, so we're looking at, you know, any improvements that we might have been thinking about making and deferring those kinds of things, and trying to really tailor it to our needs.
Well, and I just want to commend the city staff, because if you look at some of the draconian cuts that have been necessitated by our neighbors, this shows that on a relative basis, Newport Beach is in very, very good shape.
Question for you, just kind of ballpark, if you're looking at, many departments have 4% increases, and just based on MOUs, and yet been able to achieve a 2% reduction without layoffs. I mean, how do you get there?
I, Councilwoman Diggle, I think we have a slide coming up that shows, it may answer your question. If not, then we'll get back to it.
And just, I'd like to say that the two big ones that jump out are fire and police, and yet we're comfortable with the fact that we have not compromised public safety?
We're comfortable with it. Again, on a relatively short term, there are some positions, certainly in police, that will go unfilled, but then there normally are some positions that are unfilled as people, you know, move out, and then it takes a time to move in. So we think for this year that we should be fine.
Councilwoman Diggle, I, I don't know if this slide's going to answer your question or not, but for instance, these are some of the positions that were either not filled or underfilled. In administrative services, we, we chose to keep telecommunications specialist vacant for the entire year. General services had some maintenance worker, two maintenance worker, one positions. Library had on-call positions. Police, you just, Councilman Gardner just mentioned, applications coordinator, three positions, three police officer positions, a community service officer, and public works, the GIS analyst. So these are the, the positions that were either frozen. And in addition to these that are listed up here, you'll see that list does not reflect positions that will be underfilled. Again, in my own department, I'm filling a purchasing agent position with a senior buyer. So we were able to achieve some savings by underfilling positions, as well as not filling positions at all.
But the positions haven't been eliminated?
They have not been eliminated.
Just not filling them currently.
Again, I'm not sure if that answered your question.
It would seem like salary savings is probably playing a role in how you're able to balance this.
Well, and it depends upon the, the department, too, because police and fire are where the big salary and total compensation costs are, and if you're talking about any kind of cuts in those departments, it almost has to do with personnel. You really can't get there otherwise.
I guess what I mean by salary savings is the money that accrues when we don't fill a position.
Absolutely, sure.
Yes.
Sure. That's, that's, that's part of the budget that's presented to you, anticipated salary savings.
So the purpose is for this upcoming budget year, those positions will be vacant all year long?
Debt service expenditures, we show you these every year. Nothing else to show you that we don't have much debt service at this point. We have water revenue bonds, which are actually defeased or paid off this year, so the balance at 630, 2010 will be zero. The water project is paid for. We have the Bellboa Marine Loan Pre-Annexation Agreement, that's with, from IRWD. We have the Bellboa Marine Loan Pre-Annexation Agreement, that's with, from IRWD, it's rebate to the property owners. Library COPs go until, I think, two thousand and nineteen, and Section 108 loan has, I don't know, four or five years left on it. We have, also have internal service funds, which I think we've talked about before, but these are rates that we charge the operating departments, collect it centrally and expend it out of the Internal Service Fund. These are all internal charges. They're made up such items as equipment replacement and maintenance, compensated absences, workers' compensation, general liability, and retired medical insurance. These are the numbers, and you've, you might recall that you've just recently adopted new reserve policies for each one of these. The replace, equipment replacement, compensated absences, workers' comp, general liability, and retired medical. So you have new reserve funding level, reserve policy funding levels, and these are the numbers that will achieve those policies. Budgeted positions, in this fiscal year, we're proposing eight hundred and thirty-three full-time positions, which is an increase of one over the current year, and full-time equivalents of one hundred and forty-one point five-six. And, and there's where the people are employed. You see at the end, it's the two largest departments are Police and Fire, third largest is General Services, Library, et cetera. Comparison of authorized positions, it's a little difficult to read, but you'll see that in, I can't read it, but the total general fund looks like six hundred, seven hundred and sixty-one, seven hundred and sixty-one, going to seven hundred and sixty-three. Again, the total at the bottom, current year is eight hundred and thirty-two full-time positions, we're recommending eight hundred and thirty-three in the new fiscal year.
So how did, how did, so how did we get there? And the next couple of slides will help show this, but.
Sometimes, the, the next slide, Homer, shows the change in full-time, and the next slide after that is part-time, so you can go to those if you would like.
Okay, this is the number I wanted to zero in on right here, because we had, we upgraded one position in Administrative Services by twenty-five percent. Basically, they were at thirty hours a week, so we took them to forty hours a week, and there was another one that was at seventy percent and took them to forty hours a week. So that took them from being part-time positions to full-time positions, and that changed our count by two. So we have two new full-time positions, but the difference in those two full-time positions is a little more than half a position. Does that make sense? So it, it's a number in, in hours, and anybody, somebody could be working thirty-eight hours a week and they're part-time, and you take them to forty, and that becomes full-time. So if we can move to the next slide, then. So these are really the changes in, in the positions. I said that this went from seventy-five percent to a hundred percent, so it's a full-time position from seventy percent to a hundred percent, again, forty hours a week, and then we lost a full-time position here in parking operations. So it's, but it, it shows a net of one, and I think we showed a net of two full-time positions.
No, it's two new, one lost.
Okay, okay. So like I said, the only new full-time position requested was with the Police Department, and that wasn't funded?
Dennis, was there anything else you wanted to comment on in here?
No, unless the council has some questions, but again, this is the total. This year is eight hundred and thirty-two full-time, we're going to eight thirty-three, and current, one hundred and thirty-five point zero-seven FTEs, and we're going to one forty-one point five-six. One of the larger increases in that is in Fire, and I believe it's lifeguards, two point one-three, and that's really a function of this summer, the calendar, the way the calendar worked out, summer's going to be one week longer, that we're going to have the man on the beaches than normal. So we added, and it's just part-time lifeguard hours. It's no new people, it's just more hours for the lifeguards.
It also had almost two, two positions, part-time in Recreation, but again, they were for additional programming, and basically there was offsetting revenue for this.
So total expenditures, all funds, again, you'll recall this number, two hundred and twenty-five point eight million dollars, when you exclude the internal charges, our total expenditures are two hundred and ten million, that's all funds. General Fund is at one hundred and fifty-one million dollars, including a little over three million dollars in brand-new CIPs. I want to spend a second here on general fund reserves. You'll see the total reserves for the current year, two thousand nine, two thousand eight-nine is seventy million, a little over seventy million, and for nine-ten, virtually the same number, a little over seventy million. And all of these numbers that you see on here are per council policy, and they're fully funded. One thing we did, which I should point out to you, we have a reserve for facilities replacement, which is part of the facilities financing plan. We're going to finish the current year with twenty-three and a half million dollars in there. We're proposing to put in an additional two point five million dollars into that reserve to bring it to twenty-six million, but it's coming out of your operating, operation reserve, which is going from thirteen point four million down to ten point nine, transfer of two and a half million dollars. The appropriation reserve is simply results of operations that's been built up over the years, and that's the excess of revenues over expenditures. So we're recommending, in order to fund this two and a half million dollars, that it be transferred from operating reserves. But again, it doesn't, the total reserves are virtually unchanged. Just a graphic depiction of our fund, general fund fund balance. Back in ninety-three, you can, I think it was actually ninety-five, that this hit a little over eight million dollars. It's gone steadily upwards until, currently it's seventy million dollars in the current year in the, in the proposed budget year. This spike right here was simply due to capital projects that were carried over. They weren't expended in that year, so they were carried over, and they're listed as So a pretty healthy increase over the years, in spite of things like E-RAF and.
Can we, can we go back a slider, too?
Sure.
To that special reserves? The HOPE circulation improvements, two-thirds of the way down, million and a half?
Okay.
Yeah, why are we still carrying that? Because those improvements have already been done.
Well, there's, as I recall, there's another one point five million dollars that is still owed.
So, but there's, oh, I know we're getting another payment, but the circulation improvements were for the medians on Superior, for the turnpocket on Newport Boulevard, and I think for maybe a light, is that what it was?
Traffic signal.
Traffic signal improvements at Ascension and Hospital Road.
Again.
That have not occurred yet.
Oh. How much do we think those are going to be?
Couple hundred thousand.
So carrying a lot of money in that account, that's probably not going for that. Just pointing it out.
At the beginning of this discussion, the city manager indicated that we're going to spend the next couple study sessions talking about pending issues, unless you want to do something differently, but these are the things that we thought of, mostly city manager thought of, the things that we should discuss as part of this budget. And those include the facilities financing plan, which we're prepared to discuss at the next study session. Of course, we have lower bay dredging, state borrowing, property tax revenues, which we have a slide on the next slide. We can spend some time talking about PERS rates for two thousand and eleven and twelve. We know that there's a train wreck coming down at us. There's also a proposal that went to the PERS Board either today or tomorrow to kind of ameliate some of that, to make that, the rates not increase as much as otherwise would be the case. Of course, we have a pending issue about a water rate increase, traffic signal, signalization phases five, six, and eight, I think we put in the budget.
Phases three. Four and seven.
Four and seven. So four and seven are included in your budget, but we probably should discuss the next phases. The issue of Big Corona, either Police or Park Patrol for the summer. Homer mentioned the new position, Police Custody Officer, that I'm sure the Police Chief will talk about. That was per an audit. It was a requested position that was not funded, but she may choose to do so. Of course, we have the CNG Station and McFadden Square Phase Two. Now, I'm sure there are other items that you'll like to discuss as well, but these are the ones we thought of that will probably be discussed at future study sessions. And if you have any other.
McFadden Square Phase Two?
Yes.
What's that?
You know, we talked about bringing Bernie's issue.
Oh, the Centennial.
Yes, I'm sorry.
On the, the Police Patrol, Park Patrol, I'd be interested in knowing if the Police Reserves could do that, could fill that function. You know, if they can't, why would, they wouldn't be able to do that?
We will talk about that. Certainly, it wasn't in the Police Chief's budget, the overtime for the Big Corona Special Task Force that worked last summer. The PBNR is making a recommendation, it just came, I think, at their last meeting, that they want to make a recommendation, so that whole recommendation would be coming to you about trying to find some time that we allocate. I think their recommendation is for a part-time Park Patrol Officer.
My question would be in terms of, instead of full-time Police Officer, you know, if you were to keep it within the Police Department and do Police Reserve.
When you talk about Police Reserve, what do you think that means?
The Reserve Officers that help out, the ones that I see around town.
The volunteers, I think she's talking about.
You don't feel like they're.
Because there are reserves.
The ones that deliver packages and things.
Yeah. I mean, I've had a lot of dealings with the Police Department, all in my official capacity, and they're just really well-run operations. And so that would be, I like the way they do things.
We'll, we'll talk about that as an alternative, what other alternatives are available.
Okay, thank you.
Are you going to be looking at maybe raising the parking fee for Big Corona to pay for that?
No, we haven't talked about that.
Aren't the fees there lower than the other lots?
Well, you know, it's a fine line that we always try and walk when we set those fees, because every time they go up, then there means more, there's more parking in the residential neighborhood, and the residential neighborhood gets upset, so it's, it's a very fine balance.
Right, there's actually some talk also, I don't know if you're aware, that to redo the parking down there, to put in meters and maybe charge flat rate during the summer when, you know, a lot gets filled up, but put meters in on the off-season, so might generate some more revenue when you don't even have a parking guard there, as well as create more turnover during the day. So, I think Dave knows about that.
Again, it's, it's our intention to begin discussing this at our study session of May twenty-sixth. I think the rest of today will be used up with the CIP. But I do have a couple more slides. Under pending issues, I think you've read in the newspaper that if the initiatives, the six or seven initiatives that are on the May nineteenth ballot fail, then there's talk from, or there's a proposal from the State Department of Finance, recommend, I don't know if it's a recommendation, but it's just one of the things that could be done would be to invoke borrowing under Prop 1A, which was passed in two thousand and four by the voters, which basically says that the state can borrow up to eight percent of cities and counties and agencies' property tax, as long as it's, if they do borrow it, it has to be paid back within three years with interest. So who knows if the state's going to have to do that or not? I, my, my opinion is, if they do that, it just makes their problem worse, because they're going to have to pay this money back in interest, with interest, in three years, but who knows what the state's going to do.
But we'll have a chance, we will be discussing this in some detail as far as, I won't be crude, but our response.
There's the, maybe Dave knows, but the governor has moved up his May revise to next week sometime, and, and if those propositions fail, then we'll know probably before the next study session if this is a serious, serious consideration. The number we got, the initial state estimate for the city of Newport Beach is four and a half million dollars. I think that number's probably a million dollars low.
Yeah, well, that's not eight percent of seventy, seventy million.
It is not, no. It's not all property tax, it's, it's secured, unsecured, the, the two in lieu fees, and I think supplemental.
Well, I'm just looking at our budget, so seventy-seven million in property taxes, eight percent of that would be close to six million dollars.
Right. The only thing you'd exclude from that seventy-eight would be probably transfers and maybe redemptions. But you're right, I mean, it's probably, it's probably closer to five and a half million.
But if this happens, according to Prop 1A, I mean, one thing we could do with reserves is, is basically backfill that, and then as the state pays us the money, it goes directly into reserves. So it would kind of be like, you know, a temporary loan to the state.
Is this the quadruple flip this time, Dennis? What are they calling it? Is this like a three-peat?
Yeah, I mean, the legislature doesn't have any choice. If, if they borrow the money, they have to pay it back. Legally, they are bound to pay it back. It'd be against the law not to pay it.
And this, this wasn't.
Dave's shaking his head.
This really wasn't any, any part of our budget process, because up until last week, I mean, this just came up last week, first we heard about it, so, yeah, just recently, and so we did not take this into consideration in preparing this budget. Last slide I have, last slide I have, and then I'd like to just say one more thing, and that is that all these documents are online, this is the website that they can be found at, they were posted there, I think, at the same time that we passed out the budgets to the council, it was either the Friday, May first, or Monday, May third or fourth. So these are online, anybody has access to them, and if we get a phone call, we refer them to these, to this website. And I think the last, very last thing I'd like to say is, you know, this, putting this budget together was a little challenging, probably more so than in the past few years at least, but I think we're very fortunate, because when I read the newspaper about cities surrounding us and what they're having to do to balance their budget, including, you know, I just read the city of Irvine is dipping into their reserves, I don't remember how much, but several millions of dollars, so we did face some challenges in putting it together, but I think it's a good operating plan.
Yeah, actually, I had a meeting with Mayor Orange the other day, Carolyn Kavetschi, and she was telling me that they're already planning library hour cutbacks, I think closing a fire station, various other service cutbacks this year, and, you know, they're not even waiting, so.
That, that's really all I had to say about the macro review, unless you had questions.
Any questions, Dennis?
If not, then we will proceed into the CIP review. Steve, you want me to turn that over to you? You're going to have Dave Webb.
Actually, Dave Webb is going to give that presentation to us. Got a lot of good stuff here for you. We're going to start off with kind of let you know a little bit about what we've done so far this year.
And I think there are some minor tweaks to this, Dave, since it went out to the City Council.
I think we caught the last one. I have got a couple to point out on the way, though. Yes, and good afternoon, Mayor, council members. We did want to cover today, we're going to go over an overview of the two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten proposed CIP. Before we get there, though, I want to take just a moment to reflect on where we're going on this year, on this slide here, you'll see. There's over, go ahead, there's over thirty projects listed here. These are projects that we've actually delivered this year, and these are ones that have noticed completions have been filed, about a value of fifteen million dollars. In addition to that, you know that we've got several things going this year. We've had over seven assessment districts moving forward, three of them now in completion, three of them in the forming process of some stage, and another one waiting to come online in, in this coming summer. In addition to all the stuff that's been completed, we go have an ongoing encumbrance level of twenty million dollars. That's projects that we've got under construction in the design portion or the construction and work we're doing and continuing over the budget year. We have additional programs in the CIP from last year, water quality programs, environmental programs, traffic modeling, and various things that are ongoing that have been completed. And in addition, the staff's been working on updates of several master plans. We've been working on our Water Master Plan, our Sewer Master Plan, and our pavement management plan, and you'll be seeing those as the next year progresses. So just. So, just wanted to kind of touch, real successful, I think, with council's leadership and guidance over it, and the administration and the staff's, uh, working diligently on this, we've had a very successful year this year bringing projects forward. So, what is the capital improvement program? Just for those who don't know, basically, it's a program that we use to develop, uh, to construct major projects or significant items of maintenance. The program sets priorities and allocates funds to these projects, and we use it as a planning tool for development of projects and also looking for conflicts in projects. With that, we have to understand the CIP is an evolving document, it's constantly changing, and this year in particular, we had some issues, and I'll point those out. We also want to make sure the capital improvement project addresses the council's needs, which you hear from the community. And in this CIP, you'll see that we're looking at the, uh, improving traffic flow, we're looking at the park and rec facilities, we have several projects in there, we're working diligently on the new city hall. Financing master plan, we're going to look at the next study session, but that is also part of this, and also water quality improvements. They're all wrapped up in your priorities in this facility. Pardon? Yeah, that one snuck in, it's not mine.
That's, um, Mike Sinekory's daughter. You've seen her before.
Snuck in, I said you can keep it. She's cute. With this too, and, and then again, we look at the department's role, the Department of Public Works has a large role in this, obviously. And we started a capital improvement program by looking at our master plans and formulation of projects through assignments and things that are requested by the community and council and other departments. From those, we develop them, and we look at, uh, the design concepts and develop budgets from that and package up, which you see today as the proposed CIP. When this is approved, we take these projects through the RFP process to select design consultants, uh, through the contract award process to select, uh, contractors. Through that process, we manage the construction and the inspection of these projects, and all along, trying to control the cost and the schedules on this. And I'll take just a moment on this costs and schedules, because it's important, you have two benchmarks for public works, and it has to do with costs and schedules. This fiscal year, we're looking like, in regards to our cost benchmark, where we are basically to deliver these projects plus, uh, the award costs and ten percent within ninety-five percent of the time. We're looking right now at an actual ninety-six percent delivery rate, so it's pretty good on that benchmark. However, on schedules, it's been a little challenging this year, it's, as you can see, we have, we have issues that have affected the schedule, again, it's a living document, we've had a state budget crisis, we've had a deferred list that we've had to go into and move projects, we've had stimulus projects coming in, and we want to try to get those grants, and we've been working diligently, I've taken some staff members to chase that funding to make sure we get it. And then we had things like Prop 1B that the state can't figure out what to do, it affects our bridge seismic retrofit program, Corona Del Mar paving projects are on hold because they're Prop 1B money, and we can't get them moving. So, those have affected our schedules, but in regards to that, we still, our, uh, performance measure for you is basically delivering all our projects within two months of our deadline that we have set for the construction of that, and we have an eighty-five percent goal of that. This year, we're looking like we're going to come in about sixty-five percent of that. And again, I think that's successful, given all the changes and moderations we've had to adjust our schedule and actually capture some funds. Our, uh, capital improvement program, programs broken down into various categories, we have, uh, facilities and drainage and traffic, parks and harbors and water quality, water, wastewater, and miscellaneous projects. So, this project, this, uh, program this year, we're looking at basically a fifty-seven million dollar capital improvement program. In that, we have sixty-eight projects, and there are thirty million dollars in new funding and twenty-seven million dollars in rebudgeting our carryover funds.
Question for you, I had actually had it, it went kind of fast. We seem to be doing an across-the-board ten percent contingency, but we're not spending it, or most of it. And so, what that means of fifty-eight million dollars, that's five point eight million dollars that could be put into community projects, it's, it's sort of in a contingency, is there a way that we can consider maybe reducing the contingency and spending more money on proj- bringing more projects online?
You could, I wouldn't suggest that, what happens with that contingency is when we don't spend it, and a good example is the subdrain money, we have a large budget there, uh, when we don't spend it, that money goes back into the base funds, the gas tax fund, the Mezuram fund, and we reprogram that for new projects. So, this year, I know we'll be returning several, probably hundreds of thousands of dollars in general fund that we didn't use. It, it's not that we spend that money, we really look, my goal would be to have a zero change order allowance, basically, but we do need that, we have projects, and as you see, it probably averages about five percent. Sometimes you'll even see me ask for additional when we get into an underground project with a lot of unknowns, I might say, we might want to go fifteen percent, but I think it's important to keep the contingency, but we will reprogram it for the money we don't use.
What was the amount of contingency that got reprogrammed last year?
I don't have that number with me today.
But council is the one who reprograms that contingency most of the time, is, is it not? So, a lot of times you'll see projects coming to you that is funded from maybe two or three other projects, when those projects have been closed out, there's money left over. Maybe our bid estimates came in higher than we estimated, so there's money left over from a certain project. So, that's always, uh, included in basically the last page of your staff report, and financially where that money is coming from.
You also, I'm sorry, you also see-
Things like slurry, for example, I mean, I don't know if you need a contingency on slurry, and slurry is something that is a noticeable improvement to the community, people really like it, and I've noticed, you know, we have a couple hundred thousand dollars that we could have put into the community.
But that money doesn't go away if we don't use it, I think what we're trying to say is that it does, for the most part, go back into, into other projects.
Yeah, and it may also go into that same project, like in the case of slurry, uh, quite often we'll have a backlog of projects. Uh, we have a pavement improvement program that has a backlog of, of, of slurry projects and repaving projects, and if the prices come in good, uh, we generally, when we bring it to you for award, we als- often increase the amount so we can take advantage of a good number. Additionally, the, the contingencies are really required, because, well, as council awards a project, and we have a certain amount of money that we are authorized to use, if we didn't have that contingency already built into the project, we would have to stop the project and come back to you at a set meeting date to get authorization for additional appropriations. So, in a way, you're, you're essentially approving money as we need to for the routine items that may come up or unforeseen, so the project can proceed in orderly fashion without us having to stop the project, get on the agenda, and come back to you for additional appropriations.
I'd like to make a suggestion, I think we could all help each other here on this issue, uh, because I do look at those funding sources, uh, summaries at the ends of these requests, and it's very hard, most of the time, to tell if the money that's being sourced from various funds was intended to be sourced for that project from those funds, or if it's extra funding that, you know, just wasn't used for prior projects. It'd be, uh, it'd be very nice in these reports if we could routinely identify that kind of issue, where we're sourcing funds that are actual excess funds from prior projects.
Inferences have closed, closed out from closed-out project?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. No, we can do that.
This next slide is just a quick glance, I mentioned twenty-eight million dollars in encumbrances, that's projects, again, moving forward through the budget beyond the rebudgets and the new, uh, money that we are actually working on. And you'll notice, these are the top ten, there's a three-page list, but I pulled out the top ten to kind of give you an idea workload that keeps going through, but capital budgets don't necessarily recognize fiscal years, they just keep flowing through it. It's kind of an, a time to change the budget when we get to the fiscal year, but that's kind of the encumbrances we'll be carrying through.
Dave, I added that up, and it was about twenty-three million, which leaves about five million on the rest of the list, you know, do you recall any of the bigger chunks that are unmentioned here?
You know, I don't, I, I went down with Jamie Pollard, and I looked, and we had about three pages, a lot of little ones, but we wanted to pull out the big ones, um, it added up to about twenty-eight million dollars, but we can get you the entire list if you're interested.
I would be curious to see the rest of the list, yeah.
The next slide is basically just, uh, touching on the CIP history, and wanted to give you some background on where things are. You can see back in 2001 where the CIP was running, uh, the gold line is the, uh, basically approved budget, which is your rebudgets and your new funding levels. Uh, we were running in the range of twenty million dollars then. That has gone up, and it spiked in 2009, obviously, we had some big programs in there, I believe Oasis was in that budget, and you saw it spike up, and it's coming back down, but again, that's, just represents the new and rebudget, there's still the encumbrances that are going through there. There are a couple of big years on the top red line is, is another line we watch, that's the adjusted budget. As we go through a fiscal year, uh, councilor staff will be adding projects into the approved budget. Uh, that little hump in the middle there represents a lot of things that happened back in, uh, 2005, 2007. We added Back Bay Science Center, Newport Community Center, also the Newport Theater Arts Center, a lot of other projects got added in beyond the budget, and it kind of created a hump of the overall adjusted budget through those years. On the bottom, you also notice, we had our staffing in there, and staffing's pretty consistent, Lee, one year we had thirty-four, but we've stayed thirty-three, and, and just points out, I think staff's doing a great job this year, we delivered a lot, and they're under a lot of, um, efficiency stresses for me and others to really perform and get things going. So, the shop's getting pretty tight in there, and it's, it's a good sign.
Uh, Dave, that's a very interesting graph, because you have, in fact, kept staff, uh, constant while substantially increasing the throughput of projects. Are there other management, uh, innovations or alternative project delivery mechanisms that could be put in place that would facilitate, uh, fewer projects being rolled over into the next year?
Uh, there probably are, we, to get through the hump right now, because the projects loads have gone up, we've contracted staff, we have several firms on board, for instance, Oasis, I have GKK with us, and City Hall, we have various folks, that's one tool we have. It, it's really a real hard line to define, as I mentioned, because we have a lot of other projects, like the assessment districts and the master plans, that are taking up staff time. To what degree, when we start the year, we don't know, for instance, I couldn't predict that eighty-seven, Assessment District, eighty-seven would have taken so much time, but it's, it's gone off in a different direction, it absorbs time. We have to work that through, um, we're continually working with staff to, and adjusting our schedules. Some of its deferrals a project, and that leads into what you see the rebudgets. Some of the rebudgets, and I can touch on rebudgets, because that line is, I, I think it's, it's grown a little bit, but it's real explainable, that you're always going to have a certain level of it. This year on our rebudgets, we have, for instance, there's a two-million-dollar project for the Valboa Water Maines, which was tied to Assessment District eighty-seven. There's seven million dollars in there for the undergrounding of Santa Ana Heights, which will be awarded this summer, but it was in this year's budget. Um, there's a large capital improvement program for, I believe, a street, Corona Del Mar, which was Prop 1B money that got frozen by the state. You start adding a couple of significant projects up, and you carry them a fiscal year, and pretty soon you have twenty-eight million dollars, or in this case, I'm sorry, it's twenty-two. So, I think we're always going to have some extent of that, but it does tell a big story by looking at that.
Dave, we should probably spend a few minutes here talking about, you know, the alternative of, i- i- as we add projects, can we add contract staff in order to keep up with those, and is, is that a good way of dealing with it?
You know, I'd say generally yes, but, um, the degree of contract staff, that's the span of control, and I find for my personal self and probably Steve, it gets, you start getting your fingers too far off the projects, and I start having problems. All our engineers, a lot of them are young, and to what degree they can handle the political and tight situations in communities, they might need a little more oversight. Uh, we've had trouble finding probably project staff of that little caliber that probably can, have worked in cities for years and dealt with this, and can just run these projects. So, the answer is yes, to some degree, but at some point, and it gets scary, at one point, I even had in my old job, consultants, running consultants, because we just got too big. It gets, you just get your hands too far away from the projects, and you have problems. What it does, it re- makes more work for you folks, because you hear more problems, they boil up to the surface, we're involved in more, and it kind of grinds the top down, so I'd be cautious how much we would do there. The other nature of these projects too is, some projects are easier to deliver than others, you have projects like Oasis and City Hall are building projects, they're very complex and take a lot of staff time. Uh, a street overlay job is a lot easier to do, so two million dollars in street overlay might be much easier staff-wise than trying to do a two-million-dollar CYC retrofit, just comparison, and that, that's just to show up in this graph, so. Hope to answer your question.
And if I could just chime in, um, additionally, uh, regarding the rebudgets, you can see by that graph, it's just, it's fairly much of a straight line, increasing slightly because of the size of the overall CIP. But, um, the problem is that we're dealing with a budgetary year, which doesn't really fit a lot of our projects. I mean, a lot of our projects last longer than years, we have a, a lot of issues where we don't start a project that might affect, um, the, uh, you know, around the boat parade, we wouldn't work in the wintertime around the business areas because of the holidays and the Christmas sales. Um, we obviously don't do work in the summer on the peninsula and the beach areas, so we try to shove work around. So, what that does is it makes it so we have to, you know, we might push a project late if we can't get it started, you know, and there are times when we have a very small window, let's say we want to do a paving job, uh, on Balboa Peninsula, and we want to start right after Labor Day, and we're going to barely make it done before our, um, uh, the, the Christmas holiday season, the boat parade. So, typically, what will happen is if that project gets delayed for any reason at all, whether it's, uh, utilities or, or a funding issue, or something pops up, we essentially have to defer that project to the following spring, because we don't want to be in a position where we're in the middle of a project. What that does is it backs everything else up, and that's why these projects are continually get rebudgeted. But, uh, as I said, the good news is that we're, we're pretty constant level, it's not like we're rising up, we're, uh, there's, there's no alarm bells there for us, because we don't see, if there was a huge spike in rebudgets, I'd say, oh, something's going on, we need to do something here, but I, but I think what you're seeing in this chart is, is that's just the consistent number of projects that do need to go over that magical fiscal year, um, and, and pass over that date, so we end up carrying those projects.
If I could embellish this real quick, I hate to take up your time on rebudgets, just so we can get a sense of what we're doing. It doesn't alarm me too much, because I'm looking at my rebudget list here, and we have a million dollars for the City Hall project, large number. Oasis carried one point seven million, that's for the FFNE and stuff that we have to budget coming up. We have, um, another one point two million on the seismic retrofit program, which actually is deferred by the state, and we would have had the program done, but the state caused the funding shortfall, so it has to fall over. We've got one point four million for Irvine Avenue, the county's behind on that project, we expect it, that's the payment that we owe them for the portion, they're going to be done this July, but their schedule caused us to col- carry that money over. Um, we have another, uh, million dollars on River Avenue, we've been dealing with out here, trying to get that one off the ground. Um, there's another, like I mentioned, two million dollars for Balboa, Balboa Island tied to Assessment District eighty-seven, because the waterline project would go if the district goes, but that's going to rebudget now, or it might fall off, depending on that program. Um, we've got some other large ones like that, seven million dollars again for Santa Ana Heights Utility District, we thought it might be done, we had to budget it, but now it's going to happen this summer, so the money won't be encumbered till then. So, if you look at those major projects, which come close to the twenty-seven million, you can kind of see that, I don't have a lot of concern, there are things in the work, it's just timing and things outside of our control that usually run that, so. I'll move forward if there's, no, I'm sorry to get off track there. Um, we did want to put this slide in, we wanted to show you the deferred list that went on this year, it kind of played with our schedule a little bit. If you recall, we deferred some projects, and when we released a couple, for instance, the subdrain project on top was put back in later on, that's a project that's being awarded, you'll see it in your agenda tonight. The other deferred projects here, we're proposing the next three in the white there, in this coming up fiscal year project, there's three median projects there, and then there's a range of blue ones that were still pending deferred, because there just wasn't enough, as you recall, we cut our, uh, general fund allowance to our capital improvement program this year by two million dollars. Um, and then the last programs that we looked at, and we said, you know, let's just drop these projects, they were deferred, but we started looking at them, Lifeguard Headquarters remodel, we're doing an assessment of redoing that whole building now, we worked with them and said, why don't we just drop that program from now? Uh, the Back Bay View Park, we think is complete now, we don't need to continue to put money in that, so we took that out of the budget. That kind of represents those projects and where we're going right now with those projects.
On the Bristol Street, um, north, I'd like to work with you in General Services, maybe we can get that number down. Um, but if you look at that area, you know, people are trying to move, uh, luxury automobiles, major sales tax generator, and we've got that dirt strip, so maybe instead of doing this shrubs for three hundred fifty thousand, three hundred fifteen thousand, you can do something more cosmetic, that would be significantly less, but still just sort of treat that, treat it so it's no longer dirt.
Yeah, we could do that, that was, that was a number, as I mentioned, we worked with an architect on that and came up with a concept. I think the construction cost was about two eighty, you had the contingency in, and the, the money needed to design it, you're at three fifteen, so we could probably do something there and make it-
It's, it's a little high, but I think we can probably work it down pretty good.
Yeah, and we'll work with you on that one.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, see the Back Bay View Park move back into the blue category, I don't think we're done there. I don't mind deferring it, but I don't think we're done there by a long r- long way.
That's-
Don't worry, I was going to speak up.
That's the kind of stuff we need, thank you.
I want to move the slew up into the white. Actually, I hear there may be some movement on that, I mean, I don't know, if you're talking about it yet, but-
Well, actually, we did talk about that, that had been in the budget for many years, and it was tying up some money that just held, and, and the discussion was, if the, uh, core comes forward or some other funding comes forward, we could surely bring that right back to council, appropriate money, uh, to the project, but should we continue to just keep it in the budget as a tie-up? Um, the decision was maybe we, maybe we should take it out, and we'll bring in, as soon as we get some news on that, we'll bring it back.
Well, there's been some news, so.
Okay. I'm unaware of the news, but I'll surely look at that. Next, we get into the basic categories on our, our budget, and at the top, you'll notice, I, I put a little budget page up here. At the top, page one, that basically represents your proposed CIP budget and where the projects start, so if you want to follow along or have any interest to look at those. This is the facilities, and in the facilities, we have seven point nine million dollars in funding roughly for this coming up fiscal year. The big one in there is six million dollars for City Hall and the park, we have some carryover money for Oasis. CYC's still in there, we, we're going to be looking also to try to get a checklist item for some roof improvements we've stumbled upon in there, and then we've got some building money for, uh, Building I in the yard is the big highlights in that facility area. Please stop me if there's any questions, I'd be happy to go through them. We, uh, broke them out per reply charges, so you can sign the- We broke them per pie chart, just so you can sign and see how the facilities lay out and where the money's going on this. And again, I just wanted, again, Oasis is in this, this is a great area to celebrate, and we're moving along fine out there. One of our next categories is street and drainage, and in this, we're showing fifteen point eight million dollars in improvements, fourteen point eight of which is street-related, and one million in drainage improvements. In this area, I've broken it down per, basically arterial highways is our larger highways, and we're, how we break those down, there you'll see Irvine Avenue, there's the one point eight carryover that we're using for reimbursement on that. Jamboree Road widening Bristol, we've got a general plan project in there for eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars, and we're still working towards the Jamboree Bridge widening, one point three million dollars in that one, and a bridge maintenance program, what we're doing through in sealing up cracks and getting our bridges back in shape.
Does that Jamboree Bridge widening include the retrofitting for the seismic stuff? Or is that, is that separate?
No, that's a separate project. This is just the widening of the bridge over the seventy-three to add two lanes in each direction.
Oh, okay, that's not the one over the creek?
No, that's actually coming up. That, the bridge seismic program takes care of the Jamboree Bridge, we have some seismic issues on that over Back Bay. Also, the Golden Rod Bridge is involved in that one, to bring it up to seismic code.
And are we confident the Jamboree Bridge will be undertaken this year?
Well, the best I can tell is we're going to be doing it in September, we have to get through the bat season, we can't construct it over the summer, and we do think, I'm pushing the state to release those Prop one B monies, but I'm pretty sure as soon as they get their budget bonds figured out, they'll be releasing us on that. We also have on the next slide, we have local streets. In here, we're going to be working on the peninsula, on central Balboa, we've got some streets in there, Island Avenue and a couple others that have some concrete pavement issues we want to address. The citywide slurry program is in here, six hundred fifty thousand. Second phase of Corona Del Mar Streets, we'll be looking at to complete this year. And then we have two projects, one on Lido Island in here, and we have a carryover one that we'll be working, these are pavement rehab projects. And then the last one there is a street rehab project, again, this is another carryover, Assessment District ninety, nineteen I believe it is, ninety-two, up off Tustin Avenue, has been delayed, trying to get the poles out, so we ended up carrying the pavement over. As soon as the poles are out of there, we're going to go ahead and pave that.
Dave, that Lido Isle, that will, between the carryover and the number that you have up on the screen there, that'll provide for the full paving of the interior streets on Lido Isle?
Correct. Between the carryover one and this one, we're going to
As well as via Lido.
Right.
What are you doing on the streets on Balboa Island now? How's that fitting into all this?
We are actually looking at, that's part of our pavement management plan, we're just coming out of the update on that, we want to bring that to you this summer. We actually met with one of the residents out there in Little Island and looked at some of the concrete. We were also kind of waiting on seeing where eighty, eighty-seven was going, because that played into that with the water lines and all the construction we have to do. We're going to have to make some determinations now coming out of that.
And if, and if the Assessment District on Balboa Island does fail, will you still want to proceed with the water main project this coming year? Or how do you, how do you view that?
I think we can hold off, we've worked with the Utilities, George Murdock, they have some financial crunches right now, they're a little short up in front, I think we could defer that project for a couple of years. Again, I think that's down Park Avenue, we're going to do some pavement replacement with that, and a couple of the lines, but I really think we could wait a couple of years on that. It'd probably be best to do that, and see what happens on the Assessment Districts out there. Slide of Corona Del Mar, obviously, we were just doing, this was a good rehab project, came out real well, we had a lot of great response from the community, and I think it's turned out wonderfully. Other street and drainage issues, we have concrete alley replacements, part of these follow the Assessment Districts, we have our annual sidewalk program that goes throughout the city and changes out ramps and broken up concrete. This is the bridge seismic retrofit program under the other there that I've talked about, the one B project with the Jamboree Bridge, and then the median projects we had seen, the West Cliff and Avocado, et cetera. We also have a streetlight conversion program, we're really trying to take care of some of our old series circuits, it's a priority of us. By the way, there's a type on that, it's six hundred and eighty thousand, not eight hundred. However, that will change, because we've got some energy stimulus money, which you're going to see in your report later, about eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, and we've worked with the city manager and various spokes, the utilities spokes, and we're going to try to get some of that into streetlight upgrades and efficiencies. Being that the city owns most of our streetlights, and we can increase the efficiencies of that, obviously, we're going to get savings from that, so we're putting a lot of money into that, and we'll be working with you.
Will we be looking in other areas where we do have streetlights, where we may not need streetlights? I mean, we get along okay in Corona Del Mar with no streetlights.
Well, you know, we heard talk about that, there's, there's an issue, a lot of people would like to reduce the lights, it's kind of tricky, I think it's probably community by community, but I think we can, for instance, we're going to be looking at Harborview Hills and Harbor Island Road as a replacement, maybe we can tone them down, we put a more efficiency bulb in, and then we can also tone the wattage down. Surely want to check with the community.
The key to that is a process to where, you know, it takes a few people to get Ben out of shape who want those lights, and maybe seventy percent don't want the lights, and then you have a battle in a neighborhood, and those kind of issues aren't as easy as they might appear.
I know they are, but I'm just wondering if that's even a consideration at this point, because there is a movement.
And we have a number of neighborhoods that are very morally lit, and that's the way the neighbors seem to like it.
Yeah, well, I think it's a matter of preference and what you're used to, but we certainly do want to look at ways, and we are working with utilities to look at, even if we keep the streetlights, how can we reduce our power usage, and perhaps we can drop the wattage. You know, some of these streets seem incredibly bright, we might try and experiment at some point to see what happens when we go to lower wattage, does it give us, you know, still that level of comfort that folks are looking for? So, maybe it's a case that maybe we're overlit.
Touchy subject, I know, but we'll surely look at that. I do know one area we're looking at, San Joaquin Hills, we were going to replace the streetlights between Jamboree and MacArthur, and we're talking about maybe replacing every other one, it just might be overlit, and I don't think we'd notice it there, so we're kind of working on that area to see if we can do that. Again, this is how the street and drainage breakdown is with the pie chart, so you can see how we're spinning. Next area we have is traffic, and this has been a real area we've been focusing in the last couple of years, as you know, with our modernization project. We're proposing two point seven million dollars here, and as mentioned earlier, we're going to be, most of it will be going into the traffic signal modernization program, the one point one million dollars. That would be taking care of phases four and seven this year. That's Irvine Avenue, Superior, and Balboa Boulevard. And with the completion of that, we'll take care of most of our major arterials in the city. In addition, we've got a traffic signal rehabilitation project in River Avenue there. And I wanted to kind of veer off the path a little at this point.
On the signal synchronization, I wanted to thank you for the proficiency by which you've been putting that in place, and also the future planning.
Thank you.
It's been a council priority, so thank you very much.
We'll pass it on to staff, appreciate that. Come by and look at the center, they've got it up and running. Again, pie chart, going to the next one, we, this is just where I'll veer off a little, I wanted to kind of give you an update on this while we were at it. This is, again, if you recall, the original eight phases we looked at in doing this project. Phases one, two, and three are well underway, one is completed now, that was PCH through Corona Del Mar and also MacArthur. Phases two and three, which is Jamboree and the airport area up there, are underway now, and then again, we're looking, doing four and seven in this coming up fiscal year, we'll design and construct those. I think we'll also have an opportunity to maybe capture some grant funding on four and seven, OCTA is kind of rumoring about maybe some, a grant call in September this year, so we're kind of pushing them and hoping we can catch some construction money. If you recall, in phase two and three, we got two hundred fifty thousand apiece for those, so that'll help us. We do have some concerns as we go into five, six, and eight, on how we're going to fund those, and that's a topic for a further meeting. But again, if you look at five, which is, six and eight is kind of the Newport Center, San Joaquin Hills, and Newport Coast, they're not the busy arterials, we've got most of it done, and that'll, that'll finish our system, but I don't think it's as critical as getting some of the others off right now, so. We've laid out the phasing on the next slide here, obviously, phase one, we've now completed that, that's twenty-two intersections, we put two cameras in there, I know we added some cameras, they're coming in phase two and three. The transportation management center is now complete and up and running, the software in that met schedule, we had it in by January, and implementation was in March this year.
Dave, when, when will we be sort of up to speed in terms of our skill at managing that implementation? Because it's, this stuff is, this is all new, and I'm sure it's going to take us a little time, and it seems to me it's in the, it's in the skilled implementation of this that people might begin to see some improvements.
The more the, I'm sorry. I was just going to say that we, we, in fact, we have folks scheduled to go to training, is it later this week or next week? And they're going to be off, and they're, they're going to get very immersed in this, in this process. But we've actually, we've already have used the system during a special event, the, it was the March of Babies event, and it was, it was a, it was a walking event up Newport Boulevard, up MacArthur, and they had the crossover at San Miguel, and we had one of our engineers, Brian Lou, worked it here from City Hall, and he was watching the whole thing on the camera, and the whole time, he was adjusting the pedestrian timing to get folks across the street. So, I mean, this is, I think, what we talked about, the real value in this system is being able to make those adjustments on the fly during a special event, or some kind of, you know, if there was an accident, or some kind of event that we weren't, that suddenly occurred. So, we've actually, you know, we've made good use of it so far. The timing in Corona Del Mar, we've heard a couple of reports, and I know Councilwoman Gardner said that she had heard some good things regarding the progression in Corona Del Mar, so we're seeing some good results, and you're right, we do need to really, you know, get proficient at this, and our guys will be at training next week, and we're hoping that it just goes up from here.
Can I suggest that the intersection at San Miguel and MacArthur be a good laboratory? You've got a camera there, and it's truly a horrible intersection every afternoon.
If you'd stop by, it's funny you said that, because when I, when we first got it in, they were showing our staff and loading the software, that was one of our cameras is located right there. And that night, we saw backup, as you would expect in there, and they said, hey, look, we've got a backup, and they watched it for a while, and then they started tinkering with the timing, and they could release that backup real quick. It was real nice to have that observation eye. So, we're already putting that to good use and looking at that intersection. And on that point, the next phase, which is phase two, we're going to be installing thirteen more cameras, we had added some at your request the last time, thirty intersections, and that'll be under construction this May through December. Again, this, this year coming up, what we're proposing is do four and seven, that's one point three million dollars, and the phases are laid out there, twenty-seven more intersections, and hopefully we can capture some money. And then we'll be working through this year how to put together phases five, six, and eight. We're looking at OCTA, they've got the new Mezrem two, and a large component of the four percent of the money that goes towards city and programs is towards coordination and synchronization, and we're hoping to capture some of that.
So, I didn't notice any cameras noted on this slide. Are you intending to have cameras as a part of phases four and seven, and five, six, and eight?
Yes, we will, we just haven't designed them into it yet, so they haven't identified those yet. Our next program, we have our parks, harbors, and beaches, thirteen point five million dollars is a very big program this year. In this, you've got Sunset Ridge Park, Marina Park, the Rhine Channel Wharf, the East Bluff Playground Equipment, and the Balboa Island Bulkheads, continuing harbor bulkheads. There is one particularly, I know, we have to do over on Island Lido Streets over there, there's a bulkhead issue we have to address, and that's included in this project also. Again, how it's broken down.
And we're really going to do the Rhine Channel Wharf and public docks? We're really going to do that?
We are going to do that. In fact, that was something I started looking into a month ago, and I had a little schedule update, if you'd like it, to give you where we are in that. Plans are actually done on that, we're not, we have to go back and revise them, they were done in two thousand and seven, we've had some, we had to take them through Coast Commission, we've gotten, in February, we got the conditions on our plans that they want to implement, so we're going back to the designer, and we're going to update the plans, also the building code and change, so we have some structural retrofits in those plans. I expect those to be done, basically a bid package ready by roughly August. We're hoping to get all our permits from the Coast Commission after that by October, and then award it in November of this year, hopefully before Christmas. That's our schedule now. We'll see what the Coast Commission does to me.
You should, you should just grab one of those temporary docks they use for the boat show, and just shift it down there, and you'd be done.
An old barge or something we get from the Navy. Moving on, we have, this is just a picture of our sand project, if you're aware, we moved a hundred and five thousand, a thousand yards of sand from the San Ana River down to our beaches, successful project. Mike Senicore was the project manager on this, great job by getting that done. Worked around the Easter weekend, and I think it went real well, if you saw that operation going on.
Could you just go back and describe what the Balboa Island and harbor bulkheads seawall repairs are in more detail?
Yeah, the, the Balboa Island bulkheads, we have ongoing leaks in those bulkheads, and we've done some projects this year, and we identified some more areas, we need to do patches. Those bulkheads have an interesting history, they're, they're old, and they're actually low. So there's a couple of things we'll be doing in this program. We're going to, one, do the repairs that are showing up that we need to do. There's also some other harbor areas I had mentioned, by Lido and Island Street, there's an area, it's Edgewater Lane, it's a paper street that goes through there, the grass lawns there, they're actually too low, and General Services pointed this out on our December twelfth tides, we've got a lot of water coming through here. For some reason, all the bulkheads are raised, except for that one little stretch, so we're going to try to alleviate that problem in this money, too. And there's also another little chunk of money in here, I'm going to have Bob Stein look at the integrity of the Balboa bulkheads. They're old, and some of them are dead men, some of them are cantilever. Seeing so many leaks and having just done a project, we just wanted to see, what is going on with those bulkheads, and maybe come back with some review of that for future projects, and that's all on that.
Is there any thought on, on raising the height of those? With all these tides we have, they seem to overflow a lot.
I think that conversation needs to come up, and just my observation, coming from a city that I had them at ten, and these are about eight and a half, if I recall. It is a concern, General Services brought that to my attention when I came on board, we have some pictures of water right at the top. This year, if you recall, December twelfth was a historical high tide, all the discussions about ocean water rise and other things, it'd be prudent for us to look, if we're going to do any kind of maintenance or anything on that, maybe to look at raising those, but I think it's going to have to be a discussion and a policy. Maybe even our, our current policy on bulkheads, I believe, is nine and a half means sea level, or is it nine, one of those two. We might want to look at that as we slowly redevelop properties that we raise that. That was one of the things we were trying to do in Marina Park, raise that, and some of our other public streets we're doing, so, yes.
So is that like, because those bulkheads are so old, does that really become building new bulkheads, rather than continuing to add on and patch old bulkheads?
Well, isn't that part of, I think that's part of the study that, that Bob Stein's going to be looking at, you know, the structural integrity. And then I think one of the questions that could get asked and answered is, can we build on those, and would that be effective? And it might work in certain areas, and, you know, where the beaches are pretty full up against the bulkheads, that might be an easy one to do, but some of the other areas on the, kind of, I guess, the northeastern side of the island there, would probably, you know, where it goes right into the water, might have to have some real structural replacement. But, you know, it's certainly something that I think needs to be brought up to the community, maybe a big community discussion about how we might go about that, and what the issues might be, I would imagine some folks would be very concerned if we started just raising bulkheads. But certainly something we need to look at.
We also have an aggressive water quality program, you see Bob Stein working this area with Dave Kiff a lot, and myself are starting to get more and more involved in this. Buck Gully is one of our projects we're continuing, we're chasing all kinds of grant funding there. there. We believe we have some Prop 84 grants, but we just haven't had a release from the state yet, so we're looking at that.
How are we doing on our easement letters?
I know we're still struggling with that. We're working with the city attorney. There are several outstanding easements, and so we're going to be working through that process and hopefully coming to some conclusion on that soon. But it is a problem. They're not coming voluntarily.
In that regard, is any of the stabilization and flood control funding able to be coordinated with some of the work that needs to be done in terms of fire prevention?
We've been working with both fire and planning on that because there's two other projects in Buck Gully. It'd be nice if we could maybe get some of the fire debris or fuel modification taken care of, because it is, it's very tough to work in that area right now. And if we go in there and clear out the bottom and try to build the gabriance structures for the channel stabilization, it would help to have it removed.
Yeah, if we do the gabriance, that will make a difference, at least in that one area.
There's also another grant, a stimulus grant that came out through NOAA that we just applied for. It's several million dollars. We're hoping to be lucky in that area to get some money for this, too, working on multiple avenues. Some other programs in there, we have our irrigation controller program. We're trying to turn over some of our city parks and things to smart irrigation. And we have a runoff reduction grant program in there, too, where we've been working in Newport Coast and others to change out to smart timers and meters. Can you see our breakdown there? Our water facilities, $2.5 million. A large chunk of that, though, is Babo Island. And again, we talked about that. We'd probably defer that project if the assessment district doesn't go, and we'll look at it in the future. There's another large project in there from Peninsula Point. We have District 103 coming right up here, and we want, we've got the money there for the water lines should that district pass. Those are also cast iron mains that we need to replace. And then there's a reclaim program in East Bluff Park, the park itself, not the association, that we'd be, that the irrigation system needs to be changed. It'd also help in our conservation efforts to change that out.
Well, Dave, on that slide, when we say we would defer, or probably recommend deferring that Babo Island water main replacement, as I recall, that, that project was actually pushed up a couple of years in advance based upon our master plan, just in order to coordinate with the assessment district.
Yes, so basically putting it back to probably where it was. And then we have...
Is George going to give a presentation, or are you kind of covering his?
I didn't know he was going to.
Oh, okay, then that's okay.
It, it ties into the fee study he's going to be talking about later on.
Because I had a question about reclamation in general. I mean, now that we're going to secondary treatment, is there going to be more, are we looking at potentially more reclamation?
I'm assuming we'd look for opportunities because we have IRWD reclaimed and the Green Acres reclaimed, but we haven't really penciled that out. I don't know if George, you want to talk about it?
And I could maybe just add in that, you know, our current City Hall and park project, that's being designed to take advantage of reclaimed. Even though we may not have the supply in place right now, the facility will be designed so it can be used reclaiming the park.
Yeah, currently, we're, we're converting the Beneath the Creek Park over to reclaim right now, and that's under construction. The plans are done. We had some issues with state approval on the Swivel L, but then this, this one here, the, the $500,000 for the East Bluff, completely, we have to redo the entire system. The problem with doing the reclaim systems is the state health department doesn't want you retrofitting old systems. There's a, there's an issue with cross connections. So we'll have the two parks in the next two years, and the problem, we just don't have the infrastructure in Newport Beach to add too many more, so.
Might have cleaner water, but the problem is the, sort of the pipes that help deliver it.
It's the infrastructure behind it, yeah.
Moving into our wastewater program. Again, it's relatively small compared to the overall piece. It's $2.5 million. In here, we have our, some pump station upgrades. There's five pump stations. We've identified some improvements on and will be working towards. There's sewer point repairs. This is, this is kind of a new program coming out of the state regulations on wastewater that we have to videotape and review all our lines every so much, I think it's 18 months. And out of that, we'll always be finding little breaks and things on an old system. So as soon as we find them and we identify them as a problem, we'll go in and do an annual package to correct those. And also, we have some money in here for the Babo Island improvements. We're, again, tied to the assessment district, although some of these are point repairs, and we'll go ahead and do this year. We have a one less category, the miscellaneous area, and in here, there's things that kind of fall in different categories in this. There's a hoist we have to do. There's some shop modifications for our natural gas vehicle changeover, some technology on the fire warning systems on one of the stations. We have money in here for the oil improvement program. We're looking at studying on increasing yields on that. And then again, you've got the San Antonio Heights Utility Undergrounding District that's carried over. And then we'll go one more slide, and basically just providing you a summary of all the various categories and number of projects and the budgets related to those in this slide for your information. And the next one puts it more graphically, so you can kind of see how the money and the projects are laid out and spent. And with that, I should point out that we're going to post the presentation on our website so the public can see it and open it up for any other questions or things we can help you with.
Okay. Any questions, Dave?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Done a good job. No questions.
Okay, well, that concludes our effort for today. Like I said, next study session, we will get into the list of items that, that you saw, and you will, you will also have the copies of, if the department heads did present their departments, their, their PowerPoints.
Okay. Does anyone from the audience want to comment on the budget review we just did? Okay, seeing no one. You do, come on up and state your name, please.
Alan Maxfield. I live on Island Avenue, and the, one of, one of the main concerns that a lot of residents are have, that we have on our street and the bayfront between Edgewater and Lindo, or along Edgewater and Lindo between Island Avenue, is the, the seawall just stops. And I think I've sent emails to Mike and to Homer, and the last time we had the main high tides in 2006, we had close to a foot of water under our house. And the city showed up to pump the street out, but it's kind of hard to pump it out when there's no place to pump it. But I mean, if, if that's, if that's in the budget now, that, that's great, and that's appreciated. And I noticed that they said there's also going to be redoing our street, Island Avenue, which is appreciated. That hasn't been done , I've been there 61 years, and it hasn't been done then, and, you know, we're on, and we've been, our house was built in 1908, so if we have another high tide, we just might float away. So that's, that's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the bulkhead he was talking about included in?
Yes, that's a part of our budget, so we're happy to hit that down.
That's exactly what's going to get fixed, Alan. And so we're moving right along, fixing 100-year-old water pipes and 65-year-old streets. Pretty soon, we'll have a brand-new peninsula.
Okay. Okay, any other comments? Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to say, Mr. Hunt, in regard to closed session?
Yes, there is. Mr. Mayor, thank you. And we have a closed session agenda that's set forth in our open session agenda memo. I want to make a recommendation of the council, however, that we also add and that you adjourn into closed session regarding an additional matter, which is Assessment District 87. Assessment District 87 is on your open session agenda. Technically, you do not have to add it to your closed session agenda, but if we did, I would say that we received correspondence from, from attorney for the opponents to the Assessment District on Friday, and clear indications of potential litigation based upon the facts and circumstances arising out of the Assessment District. So I recommend that you adjourn into closed session for what's currently on your closed session agenda and that you add Assessment District AD-87 pursuant to Government Code 54954.2. And that would be my recommendation.
Okay, do you maintain a motion?
So would.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll adjourn to closed session. I'm sorry, any comments on non-agenda items? Nope.